Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for the town of Berlin for July 25th, 2022. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number one on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. One A is the executive session minutes from July 11th, 2022. Motion to approve. So I have a motion by council member Horace.
Second.
Seconded by council member Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the executive session minutes for July 11th, 2022 pass unanimously with all council members present. Let's see. Item number one B is the state of the closure for the executive session held on July 11th, 2022. The date and time of the closed session was July 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The place was, the vote was held here in the council chambers. The discussion was moved over to the conference room. Purpose of the closed session was to discuss the Berlin Police Department and the Berlin Fire Company and Emergency Medical Services Agreement. The date and time for the return back to the public meeting was July 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The motion to go into closed session was made by council member Horace, seconded by council member Nichols. Members voting in favor were council members Burrell and Purnell. Council member Ner was absent. Statutory authority to close the session, the meeting was closed under the general provisions Article 3-305B. Item number 10, to discuss public security if the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or the public security, including the deployment of fire and police services and staff, and the development and implementation of emergency plans. It was also closed under item number 3-305B. Item number 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bidding proposal if the public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in competitive bidding or proposal process. Items actually discussed for the Berlin Police Department and the Berlin Fire Company and Emergency Medical Services Agreement. All right. Item number 1C is the regular session, approval of regular session minutes for July 11th, 2022.
Mayor, I actually have some corrections and adjustments.
Yes.
To the, if you look at page three, which would be, be the resolution establishing the stormwater utility fees. On page three.
Page 3B, yes.
Okay. So the first sentence there, finance director, Nada Slay, dot, dot, dot. If you go down to Dar, Dar, Cool R, A, Engineering Science Technology, said while it may not been sustainable, I believe that that is referring to the utility. So while it, the utility, may not have been sustainable. Or if we could just check the recording on that.
Okay. So we need to confirm what it is referencing.
Correct. And then under the, on page, page six, second paragraph regarding the short-term rental license, a member of the audience was resident Anne Pollack, P-O-L-L-A-C-K.
I'm sorry, where was that?
Oh, page six, second paragraph from the top.
First line.
First, first line, a member of the audience. And just, just a friendly reminder to the audience, please, you know, sign in if you intend to speak. And that was it with, with that? If there's no other corrections, I'll make a motion to approve pending the correction.
So I have a motion to approve the regular session minutes from July 11th, 2022 with two corrections.
Second.
I have a second by council member Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the minutes for the regular session of July 11th, 2022 pass unanimously. Up next is agenda item number 2A, which is National Night Out, which would be held on August 2nd, 2022. And we have Claude, retired.
No, he's not here today.
Senior. Okay. So the chief of police will be running point, but retired senior officer Claude Holland will also be assisting with the National Night Out events. So go ahead, Chief.
Well, I think all the paperwork has been submitted, along with all the paperwork in reference to the Health Department. We're expecting a big crowd this year, and we wish everyone to come on out. We've actually been working with the other department heads to go ahead and make sure we have all the manpower we need for that evening and services that day will provide. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief of police? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. So I have a motion by council member Burrell.
Second.
A second by council member Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the special event request for National Night Out, August 2nd, 2022 passes unanimously. Thank you. Up next is agenda item number 2B, which is the Brudell Family Foundation's event on September 3rd, 2022. And I believe we have the Brudell family with us. Come on up. And just right here at the front table, if you don't mind, just name and then a little overview of the event that you're, that you're holding. I know we've had it before.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim from the Brudell, the Brudell Family Foundation. We are 501(c)(3). Tradition is making education a tradition and reading is fundamental. What we would like to do is on September 3rd, maybe the weekend, is to have a movie night out in the, in the park on Flower Street. We would be having, well, I read what she has sent. We have secure sponsors to assist us with the cost and the setup of our event and do not require any additional resources. Ocean 98.1 providing and setting up the movie screen on the basketball court if permitted. They will also provide the equipment for required sound. We will require electricity for the movie and sound projector. We have a DJ to provide music for the children prior to the start of the movie and a popcorn machine. Electricity will be needed for these as well. Flagship Cinema is again providing the popcorn, the foundation, as a popcorn cartoche to use to keep it warm and for distribution. Quan from Brudell, our president spoke with Ms. Ivy Wells and had discussed that she would be able to help with advertising the event by sharing it on the town media website. We are using our own resources for the purchase and providing the school supplies and to pay the $60 to the town park use fees and will use to pay the DJ. Below a list of the sponsors, the Berlin Artistry Committee, Ocean 98.1, Berlin Preservation Works, Taylor House Museum, Transform Your World LLC, and Judgment Literacy and Stream Resources, Flagship Cinema, and Pepsi Cola Brewing Company. And so if the council approve this, we would like to provide this service for our youth and communities.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
You talked about needing an electrician for, for something.
Yes.
That you will provide yourself?
If we have to. I would hope.
I think I can add a little bit of input on that. I think Tim's crew will be handling the electric.
That's correct. If you need electricity at the park, we can provide panels for the.
Thank you.
And we have, and something else you said about town fees. Town fee is how much?
So we have $50 per day for the amenity and the, and then it's a $10 additional fee for the electric, but $25, it says here, will be refunded when the facility is left in good condition, which they have in the past, so I don't see any.
Right. So we have provided this, I believe we already provided or will provide a $50 fee.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Brudell?
Yes. Why are you sitting by yourself? Why aren't you, you just told me a minute ago, you're the book counter. You count all the books for the literacy program. Your partner should be sitting right up there beside you. Come on, partner.
The bar should be up here.
Right?
She is ignoring your hard rap.
And I also understand that this is going to be part of our annual event approval process, right? So we'll start to see this.
We would hope so.
Okay.
Well, well, after, no more questions. I would like to move that, that, that this event be approved and those town fees associated with the event be waived.
I have a motion to approve.
A second.
The Brudell Family Foundation's event on September 3rd and waive the fees of $60 by council member Burrell and a second by council member Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that passes unanimously. And did you already send in a $60 check? If so, it'll be refunded to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
And just to follow up, I've already added this to the list for next year, so this will be included in next year's event when my department presents all the events in September for next year. This will be included, so you won't have to come back and do this again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Although we do like to see you, so you're more than welcome to come back and tell us all about this.
You'll be more of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you have passed the motion and everything, but if I may speak to the committee, of the persons in the room.
That's my.
I'm collecting books. We have adopted at Buckingham. We have two schools in Salisbury, Markelana, Sarkeelana, and we have been invited to go to Africa. So we have friends that have books so far in my living room. If he doesn't divorce me, I counted 2,134 books and I'm still counting. So check your addicts. And thank you very much.
What, can you just give us a little information? What type of books? Are you looking for children's books and any type of?
We are trying to make everybody come back and read. So anything from birth to the king.
Okay.
We have books for everybody. Religious books, children's books. I don't like monster books, but we try to.
I'm not much on music.
To feed everybody. We want everybody to read because we don't read anymore.
Cookbooks?
Cookbooks. I got, I got cookbooks.
Used books or used books, correct?
Very gently used, yes, ma'am. Yes. As I said, Buckingham has given us books. They give out prizes for the books. Matter of fact, last year, I forget the gentleman's name, he's on my phone, he won for the three schools, the top reader in Buckingham Elementary School. And the gala is coming up in December. He was there. Thank you.
I'm going to do a book collection at the Welcome Center with a box and put it out there for people to be able to bring their books to the Welcome Center, and then I'll contact you and you guys can come pick them up whenever you need them.
Yeah, or used, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item number three, which is the nature conservancy agreement, and our water resources director, Jamie Latcham, is going to run point.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My drive is here for the nature conservation that are for tonight. Gentlemen, sitting here right up front here, we've done this in the past, previous 2018?
2015.
2015, we've done this. So what the conservation is asking is they go in there and they, when they throw the Pokemon, they pile the spools right against the bank. Mike, if I'm saying it wrong, you correct me. So what their, their plans are, they go in there and take the spools out so that the water can, if the Pokemon gets very high, it helps push the water up into the property to flood and hold water and then the water drains back out. So it works as a, it's cleaning up water also, it's helping, but it's also helping flood, flood problems further down the Pokemon also. They've done six on our property or five on.
In the past, yeah.
And they wanted, they just need a agreement to go on our property to do three more, I think. Three more on there.
And Mike, you can come up here and talk a little bit about that if you'd like.
Yes, sir. If you want to give us an overview.
You're right, so you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, we started this project back in 2013 with state and federal agencies. It's funded through the DNR, and the goal behind this is when the channel, as Jamie was saying, as they channelized it back in the 40s, it, it just shut down the river so the floodplains were cut off. So now we've gone back, we've installed probably 140 of these breaches. So what we're doing is we're taking that spoil pile out, bringing it, the floodplain elevation straight across. So during the storm events, it has more opportunity to go back into the disconnected floodplain that we've opened back up. And it just, it's, we're not adding more water, it's just more frequent. So during the storm event, the breaches act as inlet outlets, so they'll go back out to the water once, or to the river once the, once it recedes. And we're, we're going to do two miles from Penel Crossing, south, not quite to Whiten. And we'll, I think altogether, there's 12 breaches, three on you guys. And we're, we're in the permitting process right now, and I'm hoping that we can start construction probably the end of August, September. I'd like to get in there before we get into the rainy month of the winter, which never happens, but we'll knock on wood. So that's the gist of it. Appreciate working with you guys.
Any questions from the councils?
So you said you've done this, we've done this before?
Yes. 2015, we approved, Mike came here and proved it, they approved it now.
And then my only other thing really is number six in the, in the agreement, you'll have to change that because Jane is still listening to your.
That was just a copy of when we did it in 2015. He did forward it to me.
So you.
Yeah. We can do that now.
If not, if there are no further questions, we'll take a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the agreement? So I have a motion by council member Ner.
Second.
A second by council member Horace. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And let the record reflect that the nature conservancy agreement with the actual director being Jamie Latcham is approved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Good hearing. Thanks, Jamie. All right. Up next is agenda item number four, which is motion 2022-08, and this motion is approving adding additional signage indicating that Commerce, that should say Street, will also be known as Tinley Way in honor of Dr. Reverend Charles Albert Tinley. And we have our economic and community development director that's going to run the point. And then we also have our Berlin Beautification Committee. You can come on up to the table, you might have to move a few chairs up that are, are here for this project as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll wait, I'll wait till the.
Can you just grab something from the front row? Thank you.
I get it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'd like to make a proposal to not change the name of Commerce Street to Tinley Way, but to add an additional name to Commerce Street on top of the sign that says Tinley Way, also with a sign, with a sign indicating that the mural is down located on the Bruder Hill Building. That's part one. Part two, where the Bradford pear trees were removed, they, they, they needed to be removed for, for quite some time, but it's, it's left a, a hole in that area, a triangular hole in that area. And what we'd like to do is create a pocket park there with a proposition of some electric charging stations also. And I'm requesting approval for that from Mayor and Council. And the Beautification Committee will like to talk about their idea of a pocket park.
And I, I think the motions just to include the recognition naming of Commerce Street, right?
Correct.
And the project is more or less to bring everybody up to speed with the plan that the committee has for revitalizing.
Right. There's an example of a, the sign that would be located on top of the existing sign.
This sign would be brown, right? Or would it?
Yes, it would be brown.
It would have to be right there. I was about to.
So go ahead and tell us a little bit about the project, and then we'll, we'll circle back to the actual motion.
First, let's introduce the Beautification Committee. Go ahead. To the mayor and council, I think this is the first time that we've all been in here, so I'll let the ladies introduce themselves.
Andrea Wade, Victoria Spice, Hunter Smith, and Trouble. So we interviewed a volunteer. All of us are gardeners of one type or another. Hunter has the lovely flower shop, flower.
Mother flowers.
Right. And we have been planting all over the place. This is, we have done Stephen Decatur, the Memorial Garden, the library, the Town Hall Garden, and now our focus is this. What we see is a simple garden with all the gardens that we've done. Our focus is to plant things that are resilient, that are not invasive, that are pollinators, that are very easy to maintain, drought resistant, they come back every year, and they require very little work after they're planted. And especially if you ignore the idea of giving things space, then all these things will make weeds very, very difficult to grow if you plant them close enough. So for this garden, did you have this up there?
This, right.
Okay. Right. Okay, so it's a triangular space, and when we looked at it, at first, we were going to plant the entire area, but then we thought it would be a good idea to repurpose the river rock that is there, point, put them in the points so that people can walk on them. And then the plants that we will use, like I said, drought resistant, resilient, easy to maintain, and that would be sedum, Black Eyed Susan, red salvia, switchgrass, and sweet, summer sweet, or Virginia sweet spider, all things that don't grow too tall, will fill in beautifully and be marilling colors.
Would you like?
We like packing. They're also town of Berlin colors.
The first start, the first start of the project, well, actually, we talked with Tim, and there's a telephone pole, which actually see here on the left, and we would get with Tim to get electric through that triangle into where that Jeep is. If you look up in the right hand, that square at the top there, that's a potential, we're going to put a potential electric there for maybe a possible electric station for electric cars. And then we're actually going to maybe talk to Tim, run electric the whole way down, if you look at the picture, down towards that yellow vehicle. And all the trees in that area are, they're dying and we need to remove. But we're really going to look at having electric the whole way through there. So maybe we actually put up some lamps and other fixtures, but we, we want to get the electric in the ground first. That's the first step. Second step would be putting a curb in here, the top right hand picture, and then we were talking about just doing a stamped, little walk-in station for cost effect. We're already going to probably be changing part of the sidewalk, we'll have to tear a small section of sidewalk out. And we'll just do a stamp, and then there's a sign, potential sign to discuss, if you go back to the picture, the Reverend Tindall's statue right there, or the portrait. We'll be able to have a small sign that would describe a little more information about.
About the mural and, and the Reverend.
And then we would put a curb in, and then we would go back and put in the planning after that.
We were also going to replace the Bradford pears, which are really a poor choice, with crate myrtles, which would provide a lovely bouquet in the summer, late summer, and also would provide shade for the, at least a monocle of shade for the parking lot.
And we, we talked about, I think Jimmy mentioned it as well as Georgie, going possibly every other with a tree and then a lamppost, tree and then a lamppost, to give some lighting back there as well and to hopefully replenish some of those trees that were taken now.
Jimmy, what are the dimensions of each side of this? It's about 30 feet or?
It's 23 feet by 23 feet and then 33 feet across the sidewalk. And the, we just came up with like, well, I came up with five by five because that's where we figured we'll probably run the electric, talking with Tim, down the side of the wall, underneath, we'll tear out the sidewalk, run it under the ground, so it's underground. And then go back and replace the sidewalk there, that's where we would incorporate the pad, the five by five pad.
So where, I might have missed this. Are you looking to, if you look at the picture, there's that no parking sign, and then there's the telephone pole, utility pole, excuse me.
Right.
Are we, are you looking to move those, both of those?
So that brings, that brings up a bigger part of the conversation. So this is going to probably be a tiered project, right? So what you see here as Jimmy and the Beautification Committee and Ivy have presented is kind of like a phase one of the project. What we also discussed is continuing with the town's initiative of streetscape grants. We will prepare the information we would need for a streetscape grant for this Commerce Street.
And pits.
What's that?
And pits.
And pits. Thank you. And then hopefully pursue that with DHCD, but that would be a longer term.
Right. So that brings me to my next question, is, this is grant funded? Like the, the plants and the mulch?
No, well, a combination. So Ivy, you can speak a little bit more to the.
Sure. Sure. We received, we received a Main Street Improvement Grant last year, and some of those funds are used for downtown beautification. Also apply for a Main Street Improvement Grant for this year, which we, we won't know if we received the funding for that for, for several months, but I'm pretty confident that we will receive something, and beautification is also included in that as well as benches. Now, what the mayor said with the streetscape project, if we want to apply, we've been talking about this for, for a couple of years with the previous town administrator, if we want to apply for a streetscape project, which means Pitt Street and Commerce Street, new sidewalks, historic lampposts, underground utilities like Tim's always wanted, we have to prepare the work for that right now. The, the purpose of, of grant funding is, that's your, that's your, the last box that you need to check. We need to have all of our ducks in a row, the, the estimates from Jamie, from Tim, everything that is going to take in order to do this project. We have to have what we're asking for, DBF involved, and then once we have our entire package together, that's when we apply for grant funding. Grants are not projects looking for funding, they're, yes, they're projects looking for funding, they're not grants where you try to figure out what you want to apply for once the grant pops up.
And to also answer your question, and the Beautification Committee mentioned the work that they've done throughout town, they're using the funds that are leveraged from grants that Ivy has received for the town, and also the funding that we put in for downtown landscaping that is now being shared across the entire downtown.
Two things. I just want to restate something that Ivy said at the beginning. We are not proposing to rename Commerce Street.
No.
Commerce Street will still be Commerce Street.
Correct.
But the Tinley Way sign will be added as more or less a directional sign.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm really impressed and pleased that someone thought of possibly adding a charging station. This is, this is a very good idea.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, Mr.
But we, I think it's also important to note that parking is a premium in the, in the downtown area. And we're, we discussed at length whether we do two spaces, whether we do four, whether we do more than that. And the group decided that piloting two spaces initially would be the best fit, rather than locking up four spaces for that. So I believe Tim didn't, I, I think the charging station that we would maybe like to go with could potentially accommodate up to four at some point, but we would like to start with.
That is correct. We could place it in the center between four, you know, two, two on each side, and then just have two to begin with, and then add the other two later if needed, next to them.
Is there a tie-up for runaway horses?
Not my pronoun.
All I need is a little, little lampposts.
So I, I want to also say thank you for all the work that you all have done. Hunter, you have, not only do you have a business in Berlin, you've helped with some of these projects, but you're also, to my understanding, providing the plants at cost for some of these projects.
Some of them I had, yes.
So thank you to the entire team. Thank you for, for doing that for us. With that being said, if there's nothing more to add, we would like to approve motion 2022-08, which to council member Burrell's point, is not renaming Commerce Street, but adding the Dr. Reverend Tinley's designation to the street sign.
We'll approve.
So a motion by council member Burrell?
Second.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that motion 2022-08 passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is agenda item number five, which is the annual parks development plan, and that is being spearheaded by our acting town administrator, Mary Bowden.
The annual parks development plan, you all can hear me refer to as the Parks Wish List. This is something that is actually, in the town code, the Parks Commission shall submit on an annual basis, and this year, what we are proposing as a priority project is an inclusive playground and Steen and Kater Park. This will include the removal of most, if not all, of the existing playground equipment, which is reaching its useful life, and replacement with one large playground campus, for lack of a better word, I compare it to Ben's Red Swings in Salisbury. It's one, many different pieces, but it's within one large area. And then the second priority would be a skate park study to assess suitable locations and desire and need for a skate park in the town.
Any questions for our acting town administrator?
Well, yes, I have a couple of questions. My first one, I guess, are we pretty confident that we're gonna get the funding for the lights for the basketball court? Because they're not on here.
The project has been approved, we're just waiting to hear on the final budget. I mean, provided that the Board of Public Works approves the funding for the, for community parks and playgrounds, we will get the funding. If we did, I'll put it this way, if we did not get the funding this year, it would be a priority for funding, and coming here wouldn't prohibit us from applying for a different project.
And then my, and then my only other statement is, I'm not quite sure that we, in my personal opinion, need a study and spend taxpayer dollar, even in the form of a grant. I believe that the determination of where a skate, potential skate park should be should rest with this money, and I don't necessarily need to spend the money to do that.
If the mayor and council is confident that they can make the determination where the community would want it, and where it would best serve the community, then by all means...
And I'm not directing, I'm just looking at you.
No, I understand.
But that's, that was my, that was my two things on there. I know that we have Tony from We Heart Berlin, he might be able to expand on that, but I'm not sure that we need to be, I'm not sure it's needed.
So We Heart Berlin did a comprehensive study on the skate park issue, so that, that study's already been done.
I don't know that the study was done to determine where the community wanted it. Potential locations were done as far as feasibility.
Correct.
But I don't know that the neighborhoods were surveyed. That would be the only thing.
And that's a discussion we could have.
But there would also be some geographic components, depending on what type of skate park you put in, whether it's above ground or below ground.
Right.
You may not be able to tolerate a below-ground because of water tables, that kinds of things. So there are other things that need to be determined before you can, you can move forward.
Right. There may be members of this council that hasn't, have not seen that study, and it would be nice if Tony at some point could present it to the council, and we could review it accordingly. And my other question is, in terms of priority, you have Project One and Two, are these equal in terms of priority?
No, that would be the priority order.
Okay, and I thought the skate park was always a major priority for this town.
Not thus far, no. It has never been the first priority. Last year, the development project that, or the development plan that was submitted also included the inclusive playground.
So, and what you have here is that the Parks Commission has reallocated this inclusive playground to the top of the list for D H C D, or for community parks and playground funding. It doesn't mean that we are not going to continue to work through the skate park side of things, but if it's gonna, if the project could potentially, I'm not so many, could potentially end up in a park, then I think that needs to be presented to the Parks Commission first with a recommendation made to the mayor and council.
Right, but private funding has already started for a skate park, whereas no funding's been started for a playground.
I'm not disputing that one is more important than the other, I'm just saying that I think that this tiering is designed for where we're gonna pursue the grant funding, but I, it doesn't mean that we can't still pursue a skate park.
I'm just saying we could probably get to one quicker than the other one, meaning skate park.
At the end of the day, the city services, we wanted to prioritize.
Is there anyone here from the park commission?
No.
Also, I think it will be important for, for us to hear from the park commission as a body to, as to what they have decided and what they would like to see, because that, that commission was created for, for these purposes.
What you have before you is what the Parks Commission...
It's their recommendation. This is their tiering recommendation. I believe it was unanimous to us.
So I have a question. I thought that, I think the presentation wasn't made to the Parks Commission in regards to the skate park idea. I thought it was.
The skate park has been discussed with the Parks Commission, yes. I think that, I think that what Councilmember Burrell said was he wasn't sure if everyone on the council had seen the report. Correct me if I could.
That is correct. I mean, what I'd like to see happen here is we hold on this, review the study that has been done, just to take a look at it, gather the information, and, you know, that might help us realign our priorities.
Well, the other thing is to keep in mind, these projects are, we're preparing grant applications for community parks and playground funding.
Right.
And following the Parks Commission's recommendation, the project for the inclusive playground, the grant application process is being worked through at this time. It doesn't mean that we can't work on the skate park study as well and determine a location and then apply for funding, but at this time, it's a little premature to do that without a space in mind.
Grant funding is a one-shot deal per year, correct? Yes.
Isn't that good for this?
We would, if we determine a location, if we have a clear plan in mind, then it could be slated for a future application, but to your point, this is the Parks Commission's recommendation.
Do you have something to say? No, I didn't know if you wanted to add.
I mean, I, just name and come forward if you don't mind.
Tony, meeting three or two Bay Street, I mean, I have a lot to say, but there's a lot to unpack here. The Parks Commission, I was at the meeting where this became the Parks Commission's next priority, and it wasn't sort of the Parks Commission's idea, it was brought to them as sort of an idea. So that sort of blindsided everybody, I think, and sort of made the skate park and Henry Park Lights and everything sort of take a backseat.
Henry Park Lights has been approved.
We already...
It will happen.
Well, this happened, we also had this same conversation an entire year ago about Henry Park Lights, and it's in the paper, and it's still coming, and now it's off the list.
A year ago, I did not say Henry Park Lights have been approved, because...
No, 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 the conversation was the same a year ago. It's in the paper.
But I think...
And they're off the list and just...
Hold on one second, but they're off the list because a grant application was submitted and has made it through the first round of the funding.
Or we don't have the funding yet, correct?
That is correct.
And if you don't get the funding and it's not a priority, then where does it fall again? Well, that's, Mary, just explain that.
It would rebecome a priority, but we have been approved for the funding, we just haven't gotten the word from, the final word from the state, that the check is ready to be written. But we're not gonna continue to carry it on the list when the application has already been approved, and the project will move forward as soon as we have the funding.
As long as it goes forward, that's great.
That's what will happen.
To the skate park. Truly speaking, we've raised, you know, nearly 30,000 some odd dollars, we've done a feasibility study that I have sent to the Parks Commission, I expect that to bubble up to the mayor and council. You know, we need a location, and there's no other way to say it, we need you guys to decide on a location, you know, me and the other people, who I would first put on a skate park committee, if we have a skate park committee, I've already done a lot of due diligence around town and looked for locations. You know, and it's no secret that I think the space behind the basketball courts at Henry Park would be a fantastic spot for a skate park. I have had the ground looked at by Brock Parker from Parker and Associates Surveyors, Darrell Kolar has, he and I have spoken about that location, he believes that the stormwater would raise, run off just fine through the ditch that's right there on the side. And, you know, at this point, sort of new funding and grant funding and bigger funding sources are on a skid waiting for this body to sort of decide where we should put the park. We could have easily asked John Hickman to put Henry Park as a first choice, you know, Heron Park as a second choice, and, you know, some very small semblance of a skate park as a very small third choice, Steen and Kater Park, but I think we all wanted to give you guys the opportunity to sort of make that decision as a body and figure out where that should go. But, you know, you need open space, you need ground that will work, and a place for kids to go play. Not much harder than that. So we need, that's, that's sort of where we are with that. Then it got pushed down a little bit, and I think it was in second place anyway, so it is what it is, but I'd really love to see some of this funding as well come from the town and grant funds that you guys have brought for, instead of it just being private stuff and just being a second wheel. That's all.
So Tony, I just, going back real quick and I'll belabor this, but I wasn't at the meeting, but you were, was it not on the, was this not on the agenda?
I have, no, I believe it was on the agenda, but it was, it was, I don't, I think it was on the agenda, yeah.
It was definitely on the agenda. The other point to make is that you, the potential sites listed for the skate park are all parks, and as Mr. Weave just mentioned, the report has been shared with the Parks Commission. That is the first, that's who we entrust with making recommendations to the mayor and council regarding our parks. And I think that thinking of these things as mutually exclusive is not the way to do that. I mean, we can pursue an inclusive playground while also working down the pathway of a skate park. It's also, I mean, the light project, I mean, I'm not an expert on the Board of Public Works, but I'm pretty sure it's on the agenda for Tuesday.
I have not checked the agenda this week.
I'm pretty sure it's on for Tuesday, which means that that's on its pathway for funding. So, I mean...
I'm not disagreeing with either. I mean, it's not that I'm not, I don't wanna investigate an inclusive playground, I think that's great, but it just, I don't understand how it got here so quickly, and it feels like it was, which I guess is the process, it was at the Parks Commission that it came to us. I mean, it, it kinda just jumped over every, everything that was already kinda going, and this is kinda not even the point, what are we looking at as far as a map for this?
For...
For the inclusive playground? Like what's...
The grant application would probably exceed a million dollars.
And the skate park study?
I don't know, it's in the temp, like they need to put that before, the first base is the Parks Commission, if it's gonna be at a park, should make a recommendation on that location, and then we... I mean, when Tony originally brought it...
Can we get past leaving this in the Parks Commission's world and maybe create a skate park committee that can help move this along forward, and maybe have experts in the realm versus people who are maybe not skate park experts, trying to make decisions or figuring things out? Would that make more sense?
So your request is to make a skate park committee that would report to the Parks Commission?
I don't know who they report to, but we need to get the skate park going instead of kicking it down the kick, down the throat anymore, like, we just need to get it going.
But I don't think we're kicking the can.
Sure, what did you say? But he just asked you about the cost for a skate park study, and you're gonna put it in there, how do you not know a price? Or even talk about it or think about it? Like, it's just a, well, it's not even there yet.
But when you, when you brought down...
That's kicking it down the throat, man.
When you brought the idea of the skate park and you said, hey Zach, what's the best way to proceed with this, I was the one that pointed you in the direction of Beacon, to prepare you for those recommendations and those meetings.
So that's our study, so we did the study.
Well, I don't know where you stand on the actual study of a site, but I know that you've worked through some of the...
I've sent emails to you for a year about that site.
You made, but you, your fir, and each time I say, Tony, your first step is the Parks Commission, you wanna have it in a park, that is your first step.
And they've said they wanna have it in a park. Now I need you guys to pick the park.
I don't think that the Parks Commission has been entirely convinced that a skate park is the direction.
So can we get a new Parks Commission then?
Well, I'm not entertained, but I think that we've, we've heard the request for the skate park. The recommendation is to approve the Parks Commission's recommendation, which is tiering an inclusive playground for number one, the skate park still at the number two spot, to prepare for a grant application for an inclusive playground.
Tell me, tell me, first let me answer Tony's question. No, we do not, no, we do not need a, a skate park committee. What needs to happen is that our president, Parks Commission, could call upon some of the folks that have this knowledge of skate parks to serve as a resource in their determinations that, that need to be made going forward. Specifications for this all-inclusive playground or...
Inclusive.
Inclusive playground, where are they?
What are they, is that the all-inclusive?
And, and can you explain to the public exactly what it is?
What's the question? What is an inclusive playground?
What is an inclusive playground? And do we have current specifications that would allow us to complete this grant application?
We have the components that, we have the components that are needed to compile what we believe at this time to be a successful grant application, like a successful and viable product, project to present for the community parks and playground, grant application. The idea of what an inclusive playground could look like was modeled in the Parks Commission's agenda from the previous meeting where they tiered this project. It's purely example, because we would have to, because of the size and scope of the project, we would have to go through the RFP process for actual award of what type of inclusive playground we would have. But the project would be for ages, I think, from like five or six to twelve.
Five to twelve, it's a typical playground age.
And would accommodate users of varying abilities and allow different, well, children to play together in one space that's about 6,000, 7,000 square feet.
So does the old equipment stay?
No, the old equipment would need to go, and...
How much of the equipment, all of it?
Hold on, hold on one second. So you'll recall that we had the equipment inventoried and assessed, it's, it's reaching its end of its useful life, which I think you, Councilmember Worriss, said, how did this project end up from down here up to here? And the report that we had showed some, some age on our equipment. It's still in usable condition, it's still safe, but we need to start looking at reinvesting in that equipment. So that's how that project got moved from a lower-level project to an upper-level project, and why we believe a grant application is necessary at this time for that project.
Were you at that meeting?
I wasn't.
How much, what we say, what hundred square feet? 6,000, 600?
About 6,000 to 7,000 square feet.
So how much of the existing pot are you talking about? Tell me, I mean, give me some, are we removing the inchworm, are we removing the thing?
What is it?
How much of it? It's a worm.
A worm?
A worm.
But yes.
A worm.
We talk about this every time.
Okay, whatever it is.
But to answer your question, you know how the equipment's all scattered?
Yes.
It would not exceed that space, but it would not be scattered anymore, it would all be together.
So all of those pieces that are scattered would be removed?
Yes.
What about the, the little rocking chair thingies, those as well? So everything that's out there that's scattered would be removed?
If there's something that's capable...
Why isn't there an image of this? Is there a layout?
There, there is, but it's not a...
It's a concept, and you were presented with it actually.
What, last year?
Yes, yes, you were all that. Yes, yes, you were all that. But the actual layout of the inclusive playground is not part of this discussion, that's why it wasn't included.
Okay, so the discussion is, this is what they'd like to see happen.
Right.
And we're just to think about what they'd like to see happen versus how they'd like to see it.
But you're not into the details of exactly, yeah.
And this is their job as the Parks Commission is to present this to us each year?
No, I get it, I get it, I understand.
That is absolutely correct. This is the job of the Parks Commission to present this to us. And I think, I don't think that I can proceed with this unless I have Park Commission members sitting here explaining to me what's going to happen. The Park Commission was created, and the various commissions that the town has, to keep these type of decisions and discussions out of the political realm, which means when it gets to us, it becomes political. I would prefer hearing from the Park Commission directly as to their wishes associated with these options.
I hear you, and I'm a refresher, because I mean, I'm only 47, but I can't remember what I saw last year. And I know that's not what we're discussing, what it looks like, but for me, I'm a visual kind of learner. I mean, I know that this is the priority list, but I still kind of want to see it, even though we're just talking.
You want to see the layout?
Or something, I mean, what you say?
It's also, we can make sure that everybody gets it, and we can also have the Park Commission.
Yes.
But the other thing is that...
With no disrespect to you, but I think that that was taken here.
None of this is, nobody's taking any offense to that.
Well, I mean, I hope not, but...
The thing is, is that it's available also in real time on the Parks Commission's webs or...
It's in the Parks Commission's meeting, for their last meeting.
But we will make sure to share it with everyone.
And the Parks Commission meets by monthly, every other month, right?
Well, yes, in October, they'll be, October, August, they'll be at the National Maydown, but then they will meet again for their regular meeting in September. Of course, they can meet at any time if they need to.
So what we'll do is we'll ask for them to come before the mayor council at our next meeting. It may not be them in their entirety, but it might be a subsection of the membership to, what's the request, to discuss their recommendation?
The whole thing?
To have them present.
To have them present what, though?
This.
That's what I'm asking.
Their wish list, what they want and why they want it and how it came to be.
Why they chose it. That'll work?
Go with that, Mayor? That works for me. So we'll, I would like a motion to table Agenda Item Number Five until the eighth.
Motion to table.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Burrell.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that Agenda Item Number Five is tabled until our first meeting in August. All right. Up next is Agenda Item Number Six A, which is the quarterly presentation from the fire department, or fire company and emergency medical services. And we have President Fitzgerald and Chief RJ Rhodes.
Just one.
Oh, yeah, I always called you rude, but it's rude, right?
Yes.
My apologies. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Fire first?
Fire first, yes. I can do whatever you want, good night. Just to the right.
Chief, we'll start with the operations part for the fire rescue. So the operations, April 1st through June 30th, in-town fire rescue calls were 36 calls, out-of-town 65 calls, in-town calls make up about 35%, a little more, 35 and a half percent of the calls. Increase of five calls sent last quarter. And we're just getting busier. The busiest days for us were Thursdays and Tuesdays this quarter, and the busiest times are nine to 10 p.m. and then 12 to 1 and 3 to 4. There's 23 separate times that we have more than one incident going on at a time simultaneously, and the last quarter it was only 14 times that we had more than one incident going on at a time. And our average response time is 3.75 minutes, and that's a decrease in response time by .33 minutes from the last quarter.
So administrative report, financial report, volunteer manpower, break that down, both emergency calls, over 1,400 hours of emergency calls and 1,005 hours of non-emergency, that's the training, meetings, fundraising, et cetera. So in the quarter, volunteers within 2,414 hours. Put the note at the bottom, this is just what's captured by our electronic attendance system. There's many times, like Chief Rhodes had five, six officers tonight, they met for a couple hours up there, that's not captured in the system. When you come up and do paperwork, usually they're all day on Fridays doing paperwork, we don't capture that in the electronic system. So there are many other hours, but the 2,400 hours is what's captured in our system, our attendance system. For the last quarter, no annual budget highlights, neither our last quarter. We've already received most of all the funded stuff that we could include because we started getting these responses. We're still closing out our books, just like we're here in the late w, we'll work on that, closing out fiscal year books, but as a quick...
David, excuse the microphone, if you don't mind, it's a little hard.
It's starting to rain outside.
Downpour outside, so... Is the light on too?
Green, green, yep. So just as a quicker review, as we started closing out the fiscal year, and we mentioned this before, I have to tell you, you know, the public, for the economy, vehicle fuel ended up about 9,000 hours over budget, vehicle maintenance about 20,000 over budget. We've already been through the ARPA request before, and we appreciate the mayor council allocating the $220,000 in FY23 budget for fire rescue capital items, and we'll keep the mayor council advised when we're ready to make a request for that project. That probably will not be until the next quarter because we have grant applications out. As we discussed before, we want those processes approved first to see if we receive any more grants, especially for self-esteem breathing apparatus. So that'll be upcoming. And then have a future discussion with the mayor council about capital apparatus replacement with the HMR engines. That concludes the fire rescue.
Do we have any questions for President Fitzgerald or Chief RJ Rhodes regarding the fire presentation?
As I went through this, Captain Brittingham, he works shift work, so he apologizes that some of the meetings he can't come, he certainly is our EMS captain, but he works shift work and they fall, especially in the summertime, he works a lot during the time he works the rescue facility. 246 EMS responses, almost 52% of those are in town, 230 out-of-town. There was a decrease of nine calls from last year in the same quarter. Transports, 75% of the in-town calls are transported to the hospital, 183 to 63 non-transports, and the out-of-town, 516 transported, 114 non-transports. Business days, three EMS, Thursday again, followed by Wednesday. Business time for the EMS calls in the afternoon, 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., followed by 3:00 p.m. so in the afternoon, seems to be a little time for the EMS in the last quarter. Our responding time, 46.2 seconds, that's very good, this includes the second, third calls. Second calls, just to remind you, we were staffed this period of time, with four people during the day and three at night, so during daytime, ready to get two crews out, very quick with last time, 1.13 and 68 something. So you see, by adding the additional staffing that we've asked you for, you approved FY23 to get four people around the clock, you see this maintain for decrease is now happening for people around the clock. The revenue of budget highlights as we close out the year, slightly higher in our annual donation, as a reminder, that's our mailing that goes out a week after Thanksgiving each year, and then our general donation is slightly higher. Our invoicing was very surprisingly higher, we investigated why because we wanted to ensure it wasn't an error, and it's just our call volumes back up. Over the period of 12 months with COVID, people didn't call, the ambulance didn't arrive, the ambulance didn't go to the hospital, we're getting past that now, so our call volume is coming up. And again, with the additional staffing, those calls during the daytime were answered by Berlin instead of being answered by somebody else. So with our call volume going up, we can bill for those calls because we're the transporting The expenses, we mentioned this before about our computers, they are required, all our reports are computerized now, so we had to replace those earlier in the year, just as we fired the fuel and things being made to repair, so we're, and our personnel, and that's just due to people on leave, people get sick, you have injuries, what have you, and the personnel appears to be, with the first glance of the closeout, is going to be over budget. On our capital funds, we mentioned these before, this is something we really need to get a priority on and start meeting with the mayor council about. The county has increased our, they made a budget amendment, the last minute on their budget, they've increased the funds for ambulances that they do in their formula. So it's something in the future that we need to talk about because 2025 is coming pretty quick. These ambulances now are almost 18 months to two years when you order them, and the price is going up just every day, they won't hardly give you a price for an ambulance for 30 or 45 days. The surplus in ARPA funds request, mayor council did approve some funds, it's still listed under the cardiac monitors, but it's, we do have some grant applications out for that, as well as some requests, and we have some people in the community working on some funds from foundations. So if we can get those cardiac monitors funded, we would make the request for the funds that are in the budget, probably to go to ambulance replacement. And town provided funds for the two additional people, and we greatly appreciate that. We made that move, we have conditional offers of employment out, as of July 1st, through part-time staff or other full-time staff getting extra hours. We've been having four people work 24 hours a day at fire station for any EMS response and supplementing fire rescue response. So David, we appreciate that.
Thank you. I just have three quick questions, you probably remember what they are. Are you finding, you said you're due to, are you finding you're back to your pre-COVID levels?
Not quite pre-COVID from the numbers that I ran last, last week, we talked to our building company on checking these numbers, but they're certainly headed that way. And if they continue to trend as the last six months, they will far surpass pre-COVID. Probably about at least 10%, if not more than 10%.
And then, any update on the, I know that they, you know, there was an election, so maybe there was a break in the summer, but any update on the county meetings?
So we met at the end of the budget, one of the things I just mentioned is they made a last-minute budget amendment, we talked to them about the funding that they pay per ambulance, and they increased that at the latest minute because they understood these ambulance costs going up, so they increased that by a third from 10,000 to 15,000 per ambulance.
Was that in the, was that budget or was that part?
Nope, that was in their budget funds, they amended the budget, it was not ARPA funds. We are getting ready to meet, they have allocated some ARPA funds, and all 10 fire EMS companies have to figure out how that division's going to be made. The committee did break as a group for the summer, will come back in September, but there are several, few people and a few different little committees or projects, as we call them. There's a few members that have certain projects that they're working on through the summer. One of them is filed up on the ambulance calls, one of them is the ARPA, and I forgot the third one, people had that filed.
Thank you.
David, I have a question. So I received your solicitation in the mail, and you talked about Congress funds for Station Three. It also makes reference to, these funds will help us assist in paying off the loan. In all the times that we've been reviewing your financials, I've never seen reference to a loan on that, that building or that property. It was my understanding it was paid for out of cash. Can you talk about this loan?
Yeah, we have a loan, and it's a line of credit, and yes, it was on the financial report, I believe, and that is being paid out of the out-of-town run funds, and that, it heads back down to minimum now, it is concluded. The fire company did mention the last meeting, some additional projects out there, like our floor, we cut a lot of things out, just bare basics, and we need a few things for safety, like our floor needs to have the coating for the non-slip and stuff like headquarters, so we'll have to go back to those, that line of credit and raise that back up.
So when I'm going line of credit, you use from time to time to...
Time to time.
First things for Station?
For Station Three, only for Station Three, through a local bank, and they've been very gracious to keep the interest at a very low...
The maximum amount you drew on that line of credit?
I don't have that right in front of me.
I mean, the line of credit for 100,000, is it for...
Oh, no, it's several hundred thousand.
I think it was up to a million, I think, but please don't quote me on that because I don't have that paper in front of me. Yeah, I don't recall seeing that, but...
Thank you very much.
Oh, hold on.
Sorry, I didn't get that one.
So at the end of your report, under additional staffing, you said town provided additional funds for two positions, but not for additional operating also. I just wanted to reiterate that the town has maintained its flat grant from FY21, or FY22 to FY23. It has funded $125,000 for the additional personnel which you referenced, and it has earmarked $47,520 in ARPA funds for EMS and $220,000 in ARPA funds for fire. So that does nearly double the town of Berlin's grant to the fire company from FY22 to FY23. So I just want to go on the record with that. Any additional questions for the representatives here tonight regarding the quarterly presentations? Okay. You may or may not want to stay seated for the next agenda item, that's completely up to you. Okay. So up next is Agenda Item Number Six P, the approval of the Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services Agreement. And we are looking for a motion this evening for both agreements.
Do you want to do the as-wort motion or...
Can we do them both together or do them separate?
In doing either way.
Okay, so we'll take them together unless the body believes they need to be separated.
I'll make, if there's no comments or questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement for fire and rescue services between the town and the Berlin Fire Company, as well as the agreement between the town and the Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services.
So I have a motion to approve the Berlin Fire Company and the Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services Agreements. Need a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the approval of the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services Agreements for FY23 passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. David, if you want to stay to the end of the meeting or come back up, we can sign them and then funds can be released as early as tomorrow.
We should already have signed copies here, now they're going to put in the slide, but it's like...
Those are the... I don't think that those are the accurate ones. The ones that were just approved, we would need those signed and witnessed. We can call off line or... Thank you. Up next is the acting town administrator's report.
Revisiting something that we spoke to a few months ago, hitching posts for town horses. We did have an incident today in which an unnamed horse was corralled by the chief of police. We even had a...
Is that your topic?
A member of town hall staff, our utility billing supervisor, who said, I have bridles and ropes in my Jeep, so he was ready to go, but the horse was successfully returned home.
The owner thanks you very much. Did you ride her home? She walked him.
Just today, the Parks Commission through a series of emails did approve the installation of a gazebo in Berwick Park to replace the small... to replace the small thing that was there before. Nobody really quite knows what to call it. And that is being entirely funded by We Hope Berlin.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other quick things. The, as Mayor Tyndall indicated earlier, there is a grant application in the works for the Stevens and DeCader Park playground. Obviously, we'll revisit that a little bit before moving forward. And let's see, trying to think. I don't want to hit every single thing under the fan. The FY '23 budget as approved is now available on the webpage under the Finance Department. For Kelsey, who wasn't able to be here tonight, she is running employment ads again next week for the variety of positions that we have open. And she also reminds everyone that Jolly Rogers tickets are available starting tomorrow. She has them and she'll be passing those out. So please see her if you are doing tickets. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our acting town administrator?
Mary, when is the, when is the close date for the administrative assistant position?
I want to say August 2nd, but don't swear that to me. As I said, she is running the ad again this week. So we would expect if there were going to be any more, it would come over the weekend. The ad is late in the weekend.
Thank you.
Where are we going to the bathroom than the DeCader Park?
They're still developing the specs for that. We just met with DBF last week about a number of things. That was one of the topics to be discussed.
Got it.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item number eight, and we'll start with departmental reports with our economic and community development.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, so over the last two weeks, I have completed the annual report for the Maryland State Arts Council grant we received last year. Whenever we receive grant funding, there's always, there's quarterly reports for some of the other departments, but Maryland State Arts Council requires a yearly report on what the grant funding was used for and how it affected the economic vitality, vitality of the downtown. There was an enterprise-owned Zoom conference I attended last week. The Berlin Chamber Board Meeting, we discussed upcoming events. The Berlin Beautification Committee Meeting to discuss the proposal of the Pocket Park, which was approved tonight. We had our first Berlin Arts and Entertainment Advisory Board Meeting for our Arts and Entertainment District. We talked about the upcoming 2023 event schedule. And so far, we are going to add a kids talent show to Berlin Spring Celebration for next fall, for next spring. We're working with the Berlin Chamber on that. And then we're also discussing a spring chalk art festival as well. Right now, we are currently in a logo search for our Arts Entertainment District. We started a new Facebook page that each of us is an admin on, well, some are editors on. So if everyone could go onto Facebook and like our page, Berlin Arts and Entertainment District, and you could find out more about the logo contest. It does pay $100 for the winner. But if we choose parts of a variety of designs, then each will receive, each design, each artist that made, that did the design that we chose parts of it from will receive a gift card from one of the downtown shops. We had some facade grant application reimbursements come in and met with the mayor and Mary about the Christmas parade theme decor and events. And I'll let the mayor announce what the theme is. I'll, I'll let him do that during his report. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and muddle out about it.
Oh, sure.
I announced on the radio.
Sure, sure. It is the Eastern Shore Christmas.
Hold that call.
You got your fucking burger, right? Yeah, we got the horse.
It could be horse, acetate horses, crabs, farming, corn, surfing. Corn, chickens, poultry, that's Eastern Shore. You don't think Eastern Shore entirely.
Peaches.
Corn and corn and corn.
Soybean chickens.
And, you know, we're in the beach-to-bay heritage area, so.
I've given up too much information.
Well, we don't want to have a parade full of crab floats either.
I mean, every other float's going to have corn on it now.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Blue heron, there's a variety of things. Allison and I are putting together a list for, for any of the folks that need some assistance on what their float.
Can they just email you or Allison if they have any questions?
Allison.
Allison.
Allison, aearly@berlinmd.co.
Do we have any questions for our economic community at all, the director items? All right, up next is our planning director, David Gort.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just what we put in the weekly report for this week, we issued three notices of violation. Two were for grass, one was for a untagged, unrunning vehicle. We issued 11 building permits, which included one residential addition, a new pole building, two in-ground pools, three fence permits, one for window replacement for an entire house, one for a new deck, one for repair and jacking up of a foundation, and one home renovation permit. We also participated in, as Mary referred to, the Development Technical Review Meeting we try and do monthly with DBF and our department directors. Jamie and Jimmy and Tim and I and Mary, and we talked about, we talk about current development projects, upcoming ones like Mr. Nichols mentioned, the Parks Bathroom. Matter of fact, DBS came back with plans the next day that Jamie wanted and I gave them to Jamie because he's trying to determine the water direction and the sewer direction for the new restrooms, that type of thing. And we hadn't met in a month or two, so it was good to get back on that monthly track. And we discussed quite a thing, a lot of things to do with MDE, the spray site, and different subjects that, I'm probably stealing Jamie's thunder, so. But it was good, you know, we're talking about upcoming needs we have for development, you know, EDUs and everything related. So, and as usual, the first Wednesday, August 3rd, the Historic District Commissioner will meet at 5:30. We welcome the public as always. That agenda is filling up. We have four cases for that night. And the following Wednesday, on the 10th of August, the Planning Commissioner will meet also at 5:30 on that Wednesday night, again in this room. Public is welcome. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our planning director? All right, thank you. Up next is our electric utility director, Tim Moore.
Good evening, Mayor. Past couple of weeks, we've been concentrating on tree trimming on the overhead utility lines and plus dealing with the heat wave that's been going on. I'm sure everybody's aware of that. Just to update you on the peak shaving and with the power plant, that's been really heavy because of the high temperatures and the demand load on the entire system. We peak shaved Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, all four days straight. I would also like to update, on Thursday, July 21st, we had a town-wide power outage occurred at 5:08 PM in the evening. That just happened to be at the same time that we had just made the peak for that day. We were actually shutting down when that occurred. So we did hit the peak. We were shutting down at that time. So anyway, I reached out to find out what actually happened. I was out of town at that time, but my phone was ringing off the hook. So I got in touch with DeMarva Power. What I found out was they actually had a transmission trip occur on the transmission line. In fact, it was two different lines that occurred at the same time during that time, which in turn basically dropped our substation momentarily, which tripped out our breakers. It's designed to do that to keep from, preventing damage to equipment. Anyway, the trip out started at 5:08 and the power was restored at 5:28. So within 20 minutes, we had the town totally back on at that time. And then also, starting tomorrow, we're going to be metering, so we're going to be in the yards just to make people aware of that. And then also, I just want to point out about the Savage Substation planned outage that we've been talking about for a few weeks. There's some issues that need to be addressed and we're just waiting for the material to come in. As soon as the material comes in, I'll come back to you and we'll figure out an outage. And it definitely won't be as hot as it is now taking the power down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our electric utility director, Tim Moore? Up next is our chief of police, Holland Now.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start off saying Thursday was the longest 20 minutes.
Yeah.
I think it was a million phone calls. On the 12th, Lieutenant Lawson met with the security staff of Land General Hospital and they conducted a safety assessment with the Department of Homeland Security. He also had a crisis and revision team coordinator meeting in reference to upcoming awards on that same day. On July 18th, Senior Officer Bratton visited the Coastal Learning Center to speak with the children and staff there.
Unfortunately, we do have a picture of that, but.
Yeah, it's indeed. Lieutenant Lawson and Senior Officer Bratton also went to Sykesville for a red dot site training, which is mandated for farm instructors, and that was from 19 to 22nd. And myself, Senior Officer Holland, Senior Officer Kerr, PCO, and Cornell, and Director Kurt Dowling, we chaperoned, groomed 26 kids to Jolly Rogers. And next year, we would be looking for some additional volunteers. Kids had a wonderful time. We provided food from Subway, provided the transportation, and they love these type of trips with the Berlin, it's the Berlin Youth Camp. I didn't say that first. National Night Out next Tuesday, four to seven. So want to see everybody out there, community, have a good time together. That's all my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief of police? Up next, Gaswick, anything to report, town attorney?
No, I don't.
That's good, David. Our Water Resources Director, Jamie Lash.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Water resources, in the last two weeks, we did peak shaving. We prepared a force maintenance out by Liberty Town. We repaired the SPR number one decant arm, cleaned three lift stations, had the HVAC repaired at the wastewater plant. Still working on videos, video in West Street storm drain and cleaning the sentence receiving station at the plant.
Thank you. Any questions for our Water Resources Director?
What's the SPR and decant arm?
So that is part of the process, is a Sequench batch reactor. It holds the arm, the decans, the third, we're off the top. I'm just snapping two different spots, so we had the, I mean, it sounds dumb, but we had to get 100-ton grain in here because of the reach. They have to reach so far, like 180-foot reach. So we had to repair that and had to get a welder in here to weld the brackets back up.
Now, say the name of it just one more time.
Sequench batch reactor. So that's why we call it SPR, it's abbreviation, but that is the process of the wastewater, it's treated at the wastewater plant. No problem.
Can you give us, can you give us an update on the, or I know y'all are busy, but the, the development of the RFP for Broad Street Lift Station?
Well, I was kind of told not to do anything until we had the money in hand to start, to start the design and stuff, because once you start, I mean, the money starts coming out. I mean, they, once they start doing the money, you know, where am I going to pull the money from for to pay the engineers, so.
Once we, once we give the engineer direction to start moving on it, we have to be able to fund it. And if the funding isn't available, there's nowhere to apply those expenses.
Well, I thought we were just developing the RFP.
But it, it comes out of the, the funding for the overall project. The engineering is part of that, that project.
And then that's an ARPA funding, is that?
But I believe it's FY '24.
We, I, far as I know, we get the money December, is what I was hoping for the next draw.
But that's the FY '24 allocation.
I thought it was '23, but I thought we, we were, you said hold up until we, you didn't want to proceed until we had the money in hand.
Are you asking us?
I can do whatever you tell me to do.
We need to clarify this now, which part of that funding that was allocated.
And we would like to see that done as quickly as possible, but understanding our confines of the finance record. So whatever she says financially, we do want to abide by that, but we want the project to.
I mean, we are on the books to start moving forward. I mean, I had told Josh that there's some things that we have to move forward now. I mean, you know, survey is one of them. I mean, survey is, I think he told me three months out, so that was, that was, hopefully by the first of September, we would have. We really can't design nothing until we have the site located. That, that lift station's 1935, 40. So I'm sure we, you know, that, that is, that's the, we need to start there first before we get.
Let's talk, like you, Mary, myself, and Natalie offline, and then maybe if we need to front a little bit of that money and reimburse ourselves.
We can discuss with them.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, because lead time is pretty sensible on that.
Yes, 28 weeks for the new equipment. So I mean, we can start designing it and probably develop like we did Wayne Street, go in and put a, pretty much sign the paperwork. We'll sign, this is what we want, and we can go in and proceed, you know, expediting the equipment a little further.
We'll send a little, we'll report back to, so after you, Mary or somebody will report back to the council?
Yes, yes. Once we clarify exactly how the funding is going to flow and how we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any additional questions for our Water Resources Director? All right, up next is our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I think there's a.
Apparently, they have a picture.
Yeah, we can't see what you have. Although it's a beautiful truck.
It looks very nice from here.
The new truck has arrived after 11 months that was on order. So we're glad it's here. We're starting to supply with tools and lighting for safety. We moved the stage from the baseball field over to the softball field, which I think we can probably have picked up this week.
Yes, thank you.
We'll get that. We started our mid-year side cutting. We went down West Street, the railroad bed on West Street. We're both these, I spent the junker side cutter and the mini excavator. And we've hit other out throughout the town, through the parks, DeCader Park, any of the ditches through there. William Street Railroad Bed behind the power plant. And we've hit over near Henry Park and we've just been hitting all the streets over by the electrical. And so we're doing our mid-year side cutting stuff. Our next is, our summer help has been out painting all the curves and we just started painting hydrants. We got with Jamie to get yellow paint and we've started painting them, putting the fresh coated on all the hydrants throughout the town. And then last is, I just wanted to remind our residents, I don't know if it's just been the holidays or just, a lot of people have not been getting their trash out on time. And we've been getting calls and, and understandable, and we had a lot of calls, at least probably 10, hey, I forgot to put my trash can out, can we go back? And I just want to commend Willie, Sam, and Ricky. They've been going back out, picking up the people's trash, providing that community service, or not the community service, but a community of going above and beyond for our residents throughout the town. So I just want to remind people that our trash days haven't changed. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, please have to curd by 6:00 AM and so we can be efficient as we can be.
We'll also remind them that although the town curd requires that trash cans are brought up from the street by the end of the 11 o'clock at night or something like that, they can be put out the night before collection. That way you're guaranteed that they're up at the street at the time for the crews to go by.
That's just a little scary sometimes. I mean, if it'd be just my luck, I'd put it out the night before and I'd come out and some child, I won't say. the night before, and I come out and some child, I won't say as a little child, somebody will have turned it over, and I don't start to clean up. So just try to remember to have it out there by 6, by 5:45.
Thank you. And thank you for putting the stage over at the Senior League Field and then over at the softball field. Those of you, I'm sure everybody's aware, but we did have the baseball and the softball state championship tournaments here over a two-week span.
Over at the Little League Field, so.
Thank you to the public works crews for moving those over. Any questions for our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles? All right, let's see. Up next are comments from the council, Vice President Burrow. Councilmember Purnell.
Thank you for rescuing Hooch. That horse's name is Hooch. His show name is Money Talks.
Well, that horse walks.
Any other comments? Councilmember Nichols? Need me come back?
No, I don't think I have anything really tonight.
Councilmember Nurt?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Wors?
Just a quick thank you to Tim's crew for the 20-minute outage there. That's, that was great response, and I have nothing else.
Thank you. Up next is comments from the mayor. I do want to thank Ivy for bringing me along for the Secrets Radio announcement and happy Merry Christmas in July. We announced the parade theme today, live and on the air, and hopefully we can do that years to come. And we also had some pretty good conversation on it, so it was good to see everybody. Berlin Little League was playing up in Bangor, Maine. They did make it to the finals, but they did lose, but congratulating them on well representing Berlin. Also, we had the Lesma Dinner last Thursday over at the Atlantic Hotel, so I did want to thank them again for hosting us there. We also had Executive Director of the Tri-County Council, Greg Padgeum, as well as Eastern Shore Regional GIS representatives, Mary Buffington and Logan Hall, who were our guest speakers. Originally, we weren't going to have guest speakers, but then they said, look, you got to have a guest speaker, so we ended up in three, zero to three. But it was cool because we got to access the project that has come to a conclusion, and they're gathering the data on, which is our housing study, which was funded by Tri-County Council to the tune of $17,000, and conducted by the Eastern Shore Regional GIS. So we talked about that project and some funding that's available through Tri-County Council, working with Eastern Shore Regional GIS. So it was a good dinner and a nice way to fill everybody in on what we were, what we were accomplishing here in Berlin. The last thing on my list is that during our last department head meeting, meeting with the department heads, we had the conversation about whether or not the ladies and gentlemen that you see on the periphery need to be here every single night. And I asked whether the department heads really felt that they wanted to be here every night. I know sometimes we lean on some of their assistants, sometimes they're just here in case we need them. But I think that, given the fact that they work a full day's worth of work and then are here late into the evening in some capacities, I wanted to see what the council's perspective was on potentially only having the department heads that are impacted by an agenda item, or that by basis of their weekly report, you deem that you have a question or something that you would like to ask them. Other than that, they would not be present, with the exception of our town administrator, town attorney, and anybody that we need in administrative capacity. So I'd like the council's perspective on that, if you don't mind.
I agree with that. If that's needed.
Anybody else feel passionately for or against?
What do you, what do you guys think?
What's that?
What do they?
Well, they thought...
They want to be here. They, they really do.
They, they enjoy being here for their agenda items. But keep in mind, they work long hours during the day, so.
I can give, I can give some perspective.
Okay, go ahead.
When I first became the Town Attorney, the department heads were never at these meetings unless they were needed. And that changed when Tony Carson became Town Administrator, and Tony required that they all be here to give him the report.
We now get a full comprehensive report sent to us, what, a week before? Four or five days ahead of time?
The Friday before the meeting.
So we get that same reporting. I just think it's in writing rather than oral. We would still present that publicly, quite a deceit, but...
I think they should be here.
Okay, so, anybody else?
They should.
Should. I think they should be here. It is, it provides an opportunity in this setting and this forum for them to interact with the public, and I think that is important. I think some things need to come directly from the department heads, the folks that actually do the work and maintain the operations. Some questions that come up are beyond our knowledge, beyond our expertise, and I think we need them here as a resource.
Anybody else feel passionately one way or any toward the other?
I mean, and if you can't be here that night, you just can't be here.
Well, this would be more of a not here unless we need to be here.
I completely understand. I completely understand what the conversation is, and I understand what everyone has said thus far. I agree with Mr. Burrell as far as the, there are times where I mean, there are always, there's always somebody in this audience who has something that defers to one department or another, pretty much usually every meeting. Well, tonight, I don't know if we deferred to what. But anyway, that usually happens. If you can't be here on those nights, believe me, I get it. We all have stuff, and we can't be here. But I think having, making that the sta, or keeping that as the standard, I think, I think that's the good.
And just so that we're all on the same footing, they were not requesting not to be here. We were discussing ways to improve the...
No, I hear you. I understand.
So I just want to be clear on that. But hearing that there is a passion to have the department heads still present, I think we'll continue as is right now.
I mean, I don't want to, you don't want me to speak for you, for real.
Well, the thing is, is that if a concern or something came up, we can always follow up with them.
Right, but the follow-up is not the same as having the response, same day, same time, real time.
The same day is when they actually have the complaint or question. They shouldn't wait to come to the council meeting.
You're right. They shouldn't. But you know, but you know what they do.
But me, I've actually been here to every council meeting since I've been chief, so it's going to be what it is.
Well, we'll continue as is.
Plus, I wasn't at that meeting.
I wanted to run that by you.
Well, with the, just as a suggestion, would, would it be better if, if we had the department heads here like once a quarter? Because I would like to see everybody as well.
I think, I think, given the feedback that I've received, we'll continue as...
Of course, I can come to the, yeah, I can do that.
As we've been going. Thank you for that consideration. That concludes my report. Up next is comments from the public. Do you have any? Yes, just name and street.
Tony, Wayne Street to Bay Street. I have two questions. First question is, where are we with the hiring process for the town of New Street?
We are making progress. I would have more...
Same kind of progress as we've made in other ways, or real progress?
We're making progress.
Does that mean...
We're working through that process internally, and when we have, when we have either a job description to put forward or an individual to put forward, we will do so. But at this time, we're working with our acting town administrator, and, and that's where we stand.
Okay. Well, my second question is, for the last year, based on a meeting that happened about a year ago, of... I'm just waiting for the words.
Oh, I'm...
We had a meeting about a year ago where we decided on the commissions, on the Parks Commission's priorities, and that was brought to the council, and the council voted on it. And the skate park was one of those things. And hearing tonight that we're not sure if Berlin needs a skate park, it's coming out, the Parks Commission, it's rather rude when you all look at people you're talking to. When we hear that it's not a priority...
Hold on, hold on one second. Are you talking about me?
I'm just talking to everybody. Everybody's looking at you.
But I'm writing notes to myself to follow up with you on particular items, so I'm, I'm listening actively.
I apologize.
Thank you.
What I'm stressed about is that here tonight, this is not a priority for the town of Berlin. It's not been voted on, or it's not something. And I've been raising money for a year, telling people, been raising money for a year for a skate park. Here tonight, I find out that the Parks Commission really hasn't even voted for it or said it was a thing that's going to happen, and that's rather disconcerting. So again, I'm just wondering where we stand with that, what I should tell people when they send us checks for the skate park that they want. That's all.
Thank you. Now, as the liaison for the Parks Commission, Mayor, have you received a formal request to determine, like, put the skate park on the agenda for a site? Have we received that request, or where do we stand with that?
No, I wouldn't say that we've received a specific request to be on an agenda, no.
Okay. So, once again, the recommendation is to pursue that route for the skate park, given that the sites you have mentioned are located in parks. I would recommend that you reach out and ask to be on that agenda for a Parks Commission.
I thought we already went through that, and that's my, that's where I'm sort of troubled. I don't understand. I thought we were sort of to the point where we're going to figure out as a town where we're going to put it, rather than trying to figure out if we're still going to do it.
The last conversation that the Parks Commission had with you regarding this was that they were going to put forward to the mayor and council to do a study regarding a potential location, whether it be in the town of Berlin or outside the town of Berlin. There are other locations right outside the town that might be more feasible. That was the last conversation that the Parks Commission had with you about the skate park. But at no point did they say they were looking at a specific site. They said they were looking at moving forward with the stuff.
I understand. So...
Now, my, my next question is, was that before or after Beacon conducted that report for you?
Well, sir, from what I'm learning, that's two different things in your mind.
No, no, no. I'm asking, did the Parks Commission give Mr. Weig that information before or after you had the Beacon report conducted?
I don't know that...
Have you met with the Parks Commission?
I've been meeting with the Parks Commission on the skate park for almost a year and a half, or at least a year. So in that year, what sort of stuff have you done, Mayor, to sort of move the project forward?
Before the mayor and council to prioritize having a study done.
But that's been a year.
But my next question is, have you requested to meet with the Parks Commission since the Beacon report has been completed?
No.
My recommendation to you is to meet with the Parks Commission with the Beacon report.
Okay.
And if you have a, if you have a site in mind, make that recommendation to them, and have that conversation there, because the sites you've mentioned are all in the parks. And what I would like to see is a recommendation coming from the Parks Commission to the mayor and council with a site. We can adjust course if need be, but that's why we have a Parks Commission.
To the best of my recollection, the Parks Commission has never actually been provided a copy of the Beacon report. That's my recollection. I would have to go back through the meeting and check that out.
I have said that, excuse me, but I have said that to you more than once. While I was in your office, I sent it to you once. I know you have.
But it hasn't gone to the Parks Commission.
What? What do you have?
No, I have never received that report, as this is the official report on this.
And our recommendation is that you request to be on the meeting agenda for the Parks Commission to review that report. And if you have a site in mind, please mention that to them. And if they deem that a formal site that they want to recommend, then they will send that here to the mayor and council.
All right.
Thank you.
And you.
Anybody else?
So then, I mean, barring any unforeseen, we should anticipate Mr. Weig's group is going to be on the Parks Commission agenda for September.
If that's what, if that's what's being requested, then yes, that will happen.
But they, they set their agenda. We don't set that.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to micro imagine. I'm just asking logically, that's what's going to happen.
I just think that that would be a logical conclusion.
So my last question is, is it normal for elected officials to go to subcommittee meetings and stuff like that?
What's your specific question?
I'm asking, is it normal for like the mayor to go to a Parks Commission meeting?
I've only been mayor for two years, so I prefer to maybe somebody that's been there longer than me.
Probably every mayor that I've served under has at one point or now they've been to a Parks Commission meeting, or a Historic District Commission meeting, or a planning meeting, or anything else.
Right. Depends on the issue.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address the mayor and council from the public? Ms. Wells?
I just wanted, I would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge...
Mayhem property.
If, if we didn't acknowledge Mayor Mike Pruitt in the room from Snow Hill. That's what I wanted to say, so. Everyone, Mayor Mike Pruitt from the Snow Hill.
Thank you. That's very nice of you.
Congratulations, Mayor. Welcome.
Come see how pros do it.
Can we see you in August?
I'm not being funny. I'm going to try to go around to several meetings just to see the differences in how people do it.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you need a horse, we have one. We do.
I'll trade you a horse for a blue.
Touche. Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
That was a good one.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the mayor and council? All right, up next is agenda item number 12, comments from the press. All right, number 13, all in favor?
Aye.
All votes? Thank you.
Well, guess what?
How would you all get there?
Congratulations.
Usually you see me at a Ducks Unlimited meeting.
I know.
I feel more comfortable doing Ducks Unlimited.
It's going to be a...
You're the mayor, or you're the...
Hey, Jamie.
Ross, the mayor. Ross, the mayor!
Mike, don't mind the moose.
No, let's, uh...
Mike?
Don't mind the moose.
But what you got is a kid for this.